Call to order the January 2020 meeting of the Morrisville Planning and Zoning Board, and I ask you please to join with me in a moment of reflection or prayer. Almighty God, we thank you for the many blessings of this life, including our ability to meet in freedom this evening. We pray for the safety of our armed forces wherever they may be, who are risking their lives defending that freedom. We pray too for our first responders and town staff who work daily for our safety and well-being. Lord, give us this evening and help us, guide us this evening, and help us make decisions and recommendations that will best serve current and future citizens of Morrisville, and help us to keep our town a shining example to people of all faiths and walks of life. To these things we say, amen. So this evening, I'd like to welcome Josh Michael as our new alternate member, and ask, because I think Kenneth is recovering from dental surgery this afternoon, I think Chris, you'll be our voting member this evening. I'm going to ask Town Manager Martha Page to make an announcement, if you would, Martha.
Thank you Chairman Pritchard, and other than our new alternate, welcome. I emailed the Planning and Zoning Board earlier this week to officially announce the appointment of Michelle Stiegel as the Planning Director for the town of Morrisville. Thank you for the very kind emails you've sent to both her and I in support of what she's already been doing for us. She's been with us for over three years, has 20 years of experience, not only here in North Carolina, but in several states, a variety of experience covering both the current and the long-range planning spectrums. She is eager to work with the Planning and Zoning Board, our council, our Board of Adjustment, our development community. They have also been notified, and with staff in particular, to accomplish the goals and the objectives and work with you as we do the work on behalf of the town. So, welcome officially to Michelle as our new Planning Director, and thank you for your support of her and the town.
Thank you Martha. And I know we've already emailed and so on, but again, congratulations.
Thank you all.
So, Madam Director, item three is adoption of the agenda. Any changes from the staff perspective?
No.
Any changes from our perspective? So we'll continue with our agenda. Item four is approval for minutes from last meeting. You all had a chance to review those minutes. Any changes or corrections?
I'd like to at least make a comment. It's not a change necessarily, but I did want to mention, that was new information for me, and I didn't expect, because it wasn't on the agenda as a work session. I thought it was a concurrent meeting, so when we spent two hours, and it's captured in the meeting notes, that we did an entire working session, it was really a spontaneous type of work session. I don't know if anyone else felt that way, but I know Ken was also new to that information. But I'm certain it was quite acceptable.
I understand your point, and actually, one of the reasons we've asked Brad to go through the land use plan again this evening is kind of give us a chance to recap some of that information and maybe, maybe have some second thoughts or add some other thoughts. I appreciate your comment, thank you. That said, do I have a motion to approve the minutes from December?
I raise a motion for approval of the minutes.
I have a motion, I have a second.
A second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
The minutes approved, thank you. I don't believe we have any presentations under five.
We need to do this swearing.
Thank you Marty. So not only do we welcome you Josh, we also put you through the...
So Sanjay, Tim, and Christine, who are as far as I can come forward to be reasonable.
Okay.
So, yeah. And you all just, and I'm going to say aye and include her in the minutes. So you will look at that. Aye.
Aye.
Usual, swear or affirm.
Usual.
That I would support and maintain.
Support and maintain.
The Constitution and laws of the United States.
Constitution and laws of the United States.
And the Constitution and laws of the state of North Carolina.
Constitution and laws of the state.
Not inconsistent therewith.
Not inconsistent therewith.
I would faithfully discharge the duties of my office as a member...
Faithfully.
As a member of the Planning and Zoning Board of the town of Morrisville.
Of the town of Morrisville.
According to the best of my skill and ability.
According to the best of my skill and ability.
According to the laws of Almighty God.
According to the laws of Almighty God.
Thank you. And then I have your words done, it is. Josh, Sanjay, Tim, and Christine.
I was very happy to see Marty, that you got the swearing in correct, because I tell my story of a few years ago when one of the alternates was begun to be sworn in as a special constable by accident. You got it right, thank you. So I'm going to move ahead to public comment, and I know there's some folks in the audience who've come, and then I ask a neighbor of mine, who wants to make a public comment. Please come forward, and for the record, he would give your name of the microphone and address.
Good evening, my name is Greg Patterson, I live at 106 Holly Creek Road in Morrisville. Thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight on behalf of the property owners, many of whom are here tonight, who signed a petition I emailed to you last month to support and justify our request that the properties along Holly Creek Road receive a Neighborhood Activity Center classification in the future land use plan. I would encourage each of you to read the full transcript I have submitted for information and details that I am not including in my speech tonight in consideration of the time limits. For those of you not familiar with Holly Creek Road, it is comprised of 12 residential properties encompassing nearly 60 acres along Davis Drive in the western portion of Morrisville, its own very low-density residential. When Ash and I first moved there 25 years ago, Davis Drive was a small two-lane road. I'm sure you all know now, it's a four-lane divided main thoroughfare line with retail, commercial, and residential developments. Holly Creek Road is basically a peninsula surrounded by development. We have the Wegmans under construction directly across Davis Drive to the east, what was the Farrell Farm about 80 acres that wraps around Holly Creek to the west, and the properties along Airport Boulevard to the north. As I'm sure you all know, these developments are within Carriage Town Limits. The demographics of Holly Creek itself are also changing. Of the last six properties that have been sold, only two of them continue to be family-owned home sites. Within the next few months, you'll be receiving a recommendation from Town Planning Staff that 101 is granted conditional NAC allowing the construction of a medical building. Furthermore, we have two properties currently listed for sale and expect that a third will be listed within the next six to 12 months, so most likely leaving only five of the 12 properties as family-owned home sites. The draft land, uh, land use plan currently under consideration does not support a comprehensive development strategy. It recommends nine of the properties go from very low density to medium density, one of them, 101, go from very low density to NAC, and the two remaining go from very low density to commercial. In our opinion, this will result in a piecemeal breakup of the properties, and sadly, a lost opportunity for Morrisville. A comprehensive NAC classification would be consistent with Wegmans and the surrounding developments, but more importantly, it would allow the town of Morrisville to capitalize on the retail traffic that will be generated by Kerry's developments to the benefit of the entire Morrisville community. In closing, we request that the board accept our request for NAC classification in the future land use plan. Thank you.
Thank you Mr. Patterson. Anybody else in the audience wish to speak? And this is an opportunity to talk about any item. Seeing none, I'm going to ask Brad to come up and start item eight for us.
So this is just a continuation of our last meeting work session reviewing the draft future land use map. And just to respond to the comment earlier, you know, we apologize if it wasn't clear enough that this was a work session. We will definitely work to make it more clarified in the agenda for future land use plan work sessions. But we just wanted to come back, and we know you had a week before the meeting to review the entire, you know, proposed future land use map, and then the work session, you know, we kind of intentionally put you on the spot to review it and talk amongst yourselves and kind of come to a general consensus on it. We got some good feedback, we thought, from that meeting, but we did want to circle back after the holidays, after you've had some time to digest that map a little more and see if there's any additional comments you would like to make. And to kind of clarify what Nick and I heard from the last meeting, we put together these two slides kind of touching on the main points that were made at that meeting, and I just can go over them real quick. So, there was a point that a lot of, in general, a lot of the existing single-family neighborhoods were largely preserved or remained intact or not interfered with. There was comments that you all were generally, or most of you all were generally supportive of transit-oriented development on the eastern side of NC 54, but consideration should be given to the competition between the town center. I know there was a comment made about, you know, we don't want to pull too much of the retail and commercial demand away from another mixed-use development further south in our new town center. Generally supportive of new business activity center area with higher density residential around the McCrimmon Extension Parkway, but that airport noise should be heavily seriously considered when making that policy decision, and that if that is allowed, that a lot of those structures should have some sort of noise attenuation included. There was talk about carefully examining the proposed future land uses around Holly Creek Road to ensure that it's kind of a uniform, comprehensive redevelopment of that area, and that it makes sense for Morrisville. Ensuring that areas where there are proposed higher densities of residential, that they are also supported with kind of concurrent infrastructure, in particular, the transportation infrastructure. You are generally supportive of what we heard is generally supportive of housing opportunities in close proximity to the large employment base around Perimeter Park and RTP. Generally supportive of proposed town center area land uses, I think, but there is a, an area just north, or I guess I can show you on the map, near Green Drive and Fairview Avenue where there is some lower density shown. A couple of you made the comment that may not be in the best interest to have that as low density, seeing how there's a lot of development pressure around that area, and that in a kind of a 10 to 15-year horizon, it's unlikely that it would remain low density, and we should go ahead and plan for it not to be low density. So that was a, those are a couple of comments made to that point, but that you understood that there is a desire from some of the folks that live there to remain lower density. There's a comment, a couple of comments made about ensuring that we think about school sites and where those could go when we're designating these spots for future land uses. So, there's some debate on whether or not you, we get real specific with the site locations or just ensuring that the, the areas of kind of generally accommodate school uses, which they by and large do, most of them. And so that's what we heard based on the audio recordings of the meeting and the minutes. But again, happy to touch base on any other comments that have may have come to mind over the break. We also have this cool little tool that I just put together on the fly here. This is the land use map that you all saw, the draft land use map you all saw in your work session, and there was a comment made about, it'd be great if we had an aerial underneath this to kind of see transparent, you know, like what's underneath of these designations. So I was able to do that, and I hope it shows up okay on your screen, but I can zoom to an area if you, if you have some questions about a specific part of town. But I'll turn it over to you all for questions.
Thank you Brad.
Yeah.
You're good. I have some comments, but I can reserve those. Sanjay, it sounds like you've bursted.
No. There was, there was one thing we talked about that I didn't see in your summary.
Okay.
It was more to do with the area around the Pew House. I thought we talked about, you know, potentially look considering it more...
Yeah.
...commercial activity or boutique kind of commercial activity, so that there is traffic flow as opposed to keeping it low-density housing.
So the way Halsey Levine kind of summarized these, or both I, Nick and I summarized, is if more than two members made the comment, we kind of put that as a key comment, but we did reflect that in the minutes.
Okay, yeah.
Yeah.
But I didn't see in your update, so I...
Yeah, sorry, that, as a more generalized themes of comments made, but that was a, yeah, we did acknowledge that, and I think we articulated it in the minutes, hopefully accurately.
I didn't see that in the minutes, yes.
Do you want to use your G-Wiz tool and zero in on that area?
Yeah, sure. Happy to do that. So, I believe you were speaking about, was it this area kind of south of the town center? Yeah, so there's the historic Page House back here with my little arrow is pointing to. Right now, we have it as like a very, or not very, but just low-density residential around it, and I think, correct me if I'm wrong, you made the comment about, it'd be nice to actually have some stuff around that, develop around it, and we shouldn't close off any possibility of some more dense development happening around it, as long as it's, and ensuring that the Page House would be preserved. Yeah.
Because otherwise, there will not be traffic flow, and even if you convert it into a museum, the motivation is for people to go there is going to be really low.
And I think Halsey Levine's justification for that recommendation of low density is sort of, you know, they, one of their inputs into their plan, their planning process was the town center plan from 2007. That was sort of folded in a little bit to the, into the 2009 plan, but it was referenced, you know, because it's very detailed. And it talks about sort of maintaining that kind of bucolic, sort of small village feel around historic structures. The town center's changed dramatically since 2007, or the area around it at least, and so, yeah, it's something we can discuss with council, you know, what their feelings are and direction they want to go with that area.
It's a little bit of a tough area there, just because it is sort of cut off by that, I don't know, swamp, wetland, low area.
Yeah.
Can't really be developed, so...
Access is a problem, yeah.
And the Pew House, you've shown an institutional right now.
Yeah, because it's publicly owned.
Right.
Yeah.
Publicly owned, but doesn't necessarily have to be institutional, because...
So we don't know what use, you know, we don't really, we're still in the process of figuring out what to do with the Pew House, and it could be an institutional type use. I think for now, since it's a non-occupied, single-family, it's more of like a museum-type house than it is an actual inhabited house, so they went with the potential of it being some sort of public use, whether it's a small, like, town museum, or we lease it to somebody, whatever the issue is. I think right now, they want to leave it as public, but it could, yeah, we can discuss with the plans there.
It could be an attorney's office or something else.
Yeah.
Okay. So for now, given that this is a broad brush type plan...
Broad brush is the key phrase, yes.
It is appropriate.
Yeah.
Okay. Any other comments, Sanjay?
The area on Church Street, closer towards the Town Hall Drive, what did we agree upon for low-density versus, very low-density versus medium-density?
There was not a consensus.
That's where the Airport Boulevard kind of...
This kind of right here, yeah.
Right.
Um, there was a lot of talk about it, but no one really came, I think there was just debate, and it was sort of like, well, point, counterpoint, point, counterpoint. I don't know if there was a, I don't think Nick and I saw a consensus on that. I think what we heard is more ensuring the road infrastructure can support higher-density uses there. They're showing it as medium-density, as more of a safe density to go with, although Nick, as Nick was saying in the last meeting, you could make a justification for higher-density since it's near another higher-density, you know, neighborhood here, this apartment complex, and then of course, the TOD area to the north. So, you know, kind of both points make sense. I think that's more of a kind of a policy decision. The biggest theme, I should just reiterate with this whole map, is we've heard a lot of feedback from folks during our two public engagement kind of campaigns that we did, that the western side of Morrisville, especially around the existing neighborhoods, are kind of tapped out, and they'd like to see more of the density focused towards areas that are receiving new transportation infrastructure and transit investment, and less so around existing neighborhoods. I think that's causing a lot of pain in their minds in that side of town. So, we tried to respond to that by shifting a lot of that density to the east and leaving areas that are undeveloped. West of 54 is mainly like kind of a medium-density max. But again, that's kind of a policy decision that will have to be made.
I think it kind of, maybe this is something we need to talk to the council members, is, you know, the Airport Boulevard flyover, you know, when is it going to happen? Maybe never, who knows, right? And if that's the case, then what's, what's the plan for Church Street? Is it ever going to become more than the two lanes we have today? What happens when we put the transportation, the area down there, is McCrimmon going to become four-lane, and then therefore, there is going to be more traffic down in that area? Those are, we can't have this discussion independent of each other, right? And every time we have had these independent of each other, we get into trouble with either, you know, over, you know, not having enough infrastructure to support the development, or not having enough development to support the infrastructure. So we have, we can't do chicken versus egg problem, right?
Yes.
We have to come together, and the plants have to work in coordination with each other.
So... Yeah, there's a lot of nuance with sort of timing development with roads that we don't have any control over, but, and far exceed our budget, obviously, and so we try to, I think they're trying to have a happy medium here with, with this like kind of medium-density residential as, as like kind of a safer bet, but could very well support, you know, the idea of higher-density residential since giving its location next to the TOD and next to the, the apartment complex. But there, you know, as far as I know, there is a funded Airport Boulevard grade separation project, and I can double-check on our map, and there is a transportation planner here somewhere who may, if we have to talk to, talk about that, we could summon him. But, but in general, I understand that that is something that is in the works, and the connect, you know, the access might be a little tricky right into that neighborhood, but that would alleviate some of that traffic.
Chris?
No questions.
Okay.
So, obviously, this is still the older, this is what you got to start with, right? You haven't really fed any of the things we've done.
So we've consistently taken the same map from our technical advisory committee to you, and January 14th, it'll be shown in council, the same map, so we get this consistent comments across.
All right, so we got the sort of map, and then you've got all those sort of comments that may or may not then...
They're going to be told, so that summary is going to be presented to council, verbatim.
Yeah, and right now, like they were just talking about with Holly Creek, like this doesn't really affect that, but I think there was a pretty good consensus that it does, even looking at the map, it seems like that'd be a good fit. And in some of these other areas, I just, you know, one of, I didn't know when that was going to sort of merge.
Yeah, so the Holly Creek stuff's interesting. So we, you know, we, we talked about that to, at length actually, at the last meeting, but there, so listening to the audio and talking with Halsey Levine, they weren't, they didn't sense a lot of consensus on that. It was kind of like point, counterpoint, well, yeah, I can see both sides. They are sort of, they're not strongly leaning, and I don't want to speak for them because they're not here, but they, they're leaning towards leaving it as MDR for the reasons of it's a nice kind of buffer, or transition from a more commercial use to a large residential subdivision in Kerry on the other side. But with that being said, they totally understand the other point being made, that this entire area, you can see from this aerial, with all the, the red dirt being moved here, it is, it is changing fast, and is becoming extremely active and higher-density, and there's, I think there's a new development, mixed-use development that was approved recently. The member Pritchard, or chairperson Pritchard pointed out at the last meeting.
I mean, we're going to protect Kerry's people from what Kerry, I mean, I guess my point is, I mean, there's a whole lot of stuff between Morrisville and Kerry, right? I mean, Kerry people come down here and they protest anything that we do. I mean, and, you know, we, we need to look at what's right for the town of Morrisville. I mean, I, it, I, there's a lot of merit in what he's saying, in that if you leave this piecemeal, we would lose the chance of one decent-sized parcel that could be something one day is now restricted because it's all in different, you know, hands and different densities, everything else. I mean, I don't know if anything's ever going to happen north of Bethany, that development has sort of been kicking around, you know, wherever for a while, but it does seem like there's a decent amount of synergy there that you could put together to avoid another storage place going in there, or avoid another, you know, I don't know.
Yeah, so they don't, they envision this as not like a storage place, there's, so the, the back half of the Holly Creek Road subdivision, they're saying is appropriate for narrower-lot, single-family detached, and townhome product. Right now, if we were to zone in MDR, so again, MDR in land use designation is just a general term, the actual zoning that would probably follow would be the actual zoning district of medium-density residential. Right now, that's, I think it's seven and a half units an acre. It allows for single-family detached and attached products. So they're thinking, and there's a, they know, they understand the demand, they've done a market analysis with Morrisville, they understand that there is a tremendous demand for townhomes, and that they feel there'd be no issue developing this as a townhome product, where all the property owners would likely sell at once, and we'd rezone it at once, not piecemeal fashion.
But is that the best use of that, just spanking more townhomes down in there?
That's a great question. I mean, and that's a, that's a policy decision. I mean, you could, but the counterpoint, you know, the points that were made, look at the surrounding area, there's a Wegmans, there's a, there's a mixed-use development happening just north of this, there's already a bunch of commercial near Davis. I mean, you could make the opposite argument that, you know, do you want a kind of a, like a bullseye of residential in there? So I mean, there's, I think Halsey Levine understands both sides, and it's...
It wouldn't be fair to the people who are in residential in there either, I mean, you know.
Yeah, I mean, we, it's a, it's a tough call, and it's something that they would like kind of policy direction on from you and council, but they felt there wasn't enough direction to make that one of the key summaries of that meeting. But if you can clarify it now, that's fine too, I mean, we can add to the presentation.
I'm going to join in that conversation if I may, but by full disclosure, I do live on Holly Creek Road. And, you know, 25 years, anyone who's been here 25 years, anyone who's been here 25 months has seen huge development, huge changes, but from a once semi-rural environment where my son could look at the stars through his telescope without light pollution, to what we've got today, is a major change. So to the north of me, we've got storage, to the west, we've got pretty high-density with large townhomes incorporated on the farms. To the south of 101, Holly Creek, there's an approved plan for 49 apartments. Across the street, Wegmans, I mean, you can see it today, there's a streetlight every 20 feet, it seems. Huge, huge changes. And what I personally would like to see, and I think most of my neighbors would like to see, is not this thing developed piece by piece, a little bit here, a little bit there. This is a last golden opportunity for Morrisville, with 55 or 60 acres, to develop something that's really prestigious, something that is mixed-use, something that is, you know, pretty smart, pretty nice. Something like Grace Park, which is mixed-use, it's got residential, it's got services. That's the sort of thing where I think a good developer would come in and have a good vision of putting something quite substantial there. And I, I believe that having an A.C. designation would attract that kind of development and that kind of solution. That's, that's my thought. Another, quite frankly, is that consultants are great, and we should listen to them, but I don't think they're the ones who should make the decisions. So if the majority of folks from any of these areas in the land use plan come up with what they would like, I think that ought to have a pretty strong voice with the council. So I'll get off my soapbox, move to maybe ask Tim if you have any questions or comments about the whole land use plan.
No, I, I think the comments I mentioned were captured. I appreciate the, the comments around the school and the clarifications around that, because I think, you know, regardless of how this gets developed over time, you know, I just want to ensure that that is an option for us to continue to have services. We talk a lot about transportation, it's the number-one issue that comes up in, in feedback around having the ability to navigate through Morrisville and around Morrisville, certainly a key topic, but in addition to that, is just having the availability for schools within the community so we can look at busing. And again, that's, a lot of it's way out of our control, I get that, but, but I... And again, that's, a lot of it's way out of our control, I get that, but I appreciate that that was taken into consideration and is part of the comments around that getting sorted.
Sure.
Thank you for that.
Josh, I'm going to put you on the spot.
No, I'm, I'm okay right now, yeah.
Well, I gave you the obvious invitation. Lee, I know I cut you off because we talked about.
No, well, I mean, I think that, you know, I just was wondering how these things were going to merge in together as far as the plans and what point we would see that, that's my question, so.
I mean, just to add to what Lee and you said, right, to me, we need to, you know, we talked about the green level was the same situation where it was a low density in the middle of all of it, right? This kind of is similar one, but it is sizable size, right? So.
Some parallels, sure.
Maybe, if, tell me if I'm mistaken, but I think in general, there is a consensus that we are looking for places or Morrisville to be developed in where there is commu, I mean, less commute required, you know, where you can live, you can work and do whatever you need to, right? And that's the kind of model, if you think about it for these open areas, is what we are looking for, right? And I know we can't designate a space for school, but if you, if there is, if there is, there is really no other space in Morrisville that you can get fifty to sixty acres of land.
That would be a terrible place for.
I'm not saying, look.
Because we get no tax.
I didn't, I didn't say, I didn't say that it should be a school, but some, something that may make it more, if you will, attractive development-wise, and more importantly, help grow the community as well. Right? You have to think about the big picture for what is, you know, just putting more homes is not necessarily the answer for everything.
Yeah, and that's more the reason to have more of a mixed-use, where you have people that can, you know, at least some people can circulate within the property and not necessarily they have to go elsewhere. I mean, you know, we keep having these kind of missed opportunities. I mean, Park West Village is one giant missed sort of opportunity, the way it ended up being developed. I mean, it's just like, just keep on repeating the same thing over and over again. We're not going to do anything any different, we're going to keep getting the same stuff. And we're going to keep getting four different separate little tiny little rows of townhomes, and they're by different developers. I just don't see how that really is a benefit. You have a lot of wasted space and opportunity by doing that.
Yeah, and I should say with NAC, you know, let's say that was zoned NAC, townhomes are allowed in that, too.
Right, but if you had one consistent zoning, like already you've got sort of different zonings. I mean, the more consistent you can make things, it gives people more of a chance to at least slightly more easily come in there and do a cohesive development rather than this parcel or having to go back later on and try to re, you know, after this first piece is done over here, oh, wow, well, now we definitely need to put something different there. It's like, just, let's do it now. Instead of like doing it, everybody can sort of see what's happening there, like, just do it now.
Yeah, I mean, we do have, I mean, and there is a rezoning, I think, coming for one of those parcels now. That's an NAC, that I think they're requesting an NAC, and it's already coming, yeah.
One more little bite, so then just do the next piece.
Yeah, no, I mean, that's a point, valid point.
And similarly, we had this discussion as well around the properties around the town center down here, right? They are still zone, yeah, low density because that's what the residential currently is asking for, I believe, right? But should we really do it that way? It's something we need to think about.
This area right here?
Yeah, exactly, right? Is that the one?
Yeah, I think it's the Green Drive one, yeah.
Right, no, not the Green Drive, I'm talking about.
Oh, this?
The little piece just behind, right?
Right in front of the.
The church and page right behind us, yeah.
This, this entire area there.
Okay.
Should we leave it that way? Because yes, you know, we are talking about ten, fifteen years down the line.
And you're talking about the whole overall thing, you're.
Yeah.
Yeah, so.
Same, same point, right, that we are having around the other areas.
It's a good one, but it all fall into space, right? So, you make that higher density, you have to be able to support that, right? And you asked a good question around Church Street, does anything ever happen with that? So, you know, does that get widened in ways that can support more? Yeah, then maybe that makes sense. But I think that all has to be looked at in concert, right, to make it ideal.
Yeah, so I think that area near Page and Church, they're showing as higher density residential. So, right now, it's kind of a hodgepodge of a few historic mill houses, and then there's some other houses back there. They're seeing that area as very ripe for redevelopment. I know in the two thousand and seven Town Center Plan, they were looking at a very low-density kind of crossroads village, and I think that's what our zoning district is actually referred to as, to maintain that crossroads feel, you know, but as someone said at the last work session, you know, we're not, we're not that community anymore, and we need to be looking at some, you know, the understanding that redevelopment's going to happen, how do we deal with it? And we know it's going to be higher density than what's there, so.
And I see what you're saying, because I looked at it on the map that we have in our packet, and actually, the yellow, the light yellow and the brown don't really stand out very much on this because.
On the packet, oh.
But yeah, it is clear, you're right, it clears day that on this, on that plan, that that is high. I was actually agreeing with him, I thought it said low, but it doesn't. So, if you look at the, yeah, you look at this colored one, it shows up there.
So, I hate us to lose the history of that area. And you know, I've got.
And you're fond of it, yes.
Behind me from two thousand and seven era. And, you know, life is a little bit more problematic with that, and the town center itself has kind of moved north. But as long as we don't totally forget the history.
I think they're in agreement with that. I think there's a lot of adaptive reuse opportunities, especially, you know, we're talking earlier about the Pugh House. That's a very prominent structure that a lot of folks see when they enter Morrisville. So, we want to make sure that we take the time to consider the programming there. There's some other Wake County landmark and National Historic Preservation Registered structures. I think there's three or four of those in the town center that we, of course, would want to preserve. And the Historic Christian Church is certainly one of those sites that we want to ensure functions kind of as a cultural amenity. But yeah, but around it, I mean, we, I think House Levine is, they're kind of like, this is very obvious that this is a, is ripe for development. You can kind of see it creep down Church Street with the townhome projects. So, this wouldn't be any different, especially if we build out a town center, you know.
You know, I would be very frightened. That's what worries me is that more and more townhomes are going to come all along that street, and it's going to kind of destroy maybe the, you know, small-town village feel that we are looking for, right? So, if you want to keep the church around, if you want to build around it, you almost have to think about these things as an anchored project, right? Like, the Pugh House is an anchor in that area, and what can go along, around it so that it gets the traffic and whatnot? Same thing on Church Street is if you are, if the two churches are to be preserved as is, then the surrounding area has to match to what those identities are. If you just build townhomes around it, it's just going to be an oddball church sitting in, surrounded by homes. That doesn't visibly look nice and is not something that is going to be attractive from a, you know, what the whole intention of that area is.
Yeah, we used to have a nice tool where we could kind of mitigate some of those issues with design controls of how those residential units looked. Unfortunately, our ability to do that with single-family homes has been taken away. I think it was twenty fifteen or twenty, the Design Control Bill, I think it was called. So, yeah, unfortunately, the only way we could get sort of a nice extra aesthetic that's more than usually required would be if a developer volunteered that.
Or you have to zone it appropriately so that there is, that, that, those activities that might destroy that field can't be done because of the zoning.
So, it could solve some of that. The, the density could certainly be sort of turned up, turned down with zoning. The look and feel of the actual houses themselves, we kind of don't have a lot of authority anymore. We used to have that authority, but that's been taken away from us by the state. So, we're kind of limited in what we can prescribe there, but I totally agree with that point. I mean, it would, it's just that we are sort of stuck with what we have in terms of our regulatory authority with, with the design of those structures. If you think higher dens, you know, when you think high density, we have to understand that high density could be narrow lot, single-family detached homes as well as townhomes, as well as multifamily. They're envisioning this, just for clarity here, as narrow lot, single-family detached homes. But if it were to receive just a blanket high-density residential zoning district, let's say we did that, you know, you could build apartments or whatever. I think they envision, once the zoning component comes into this, after the land use plan is adopted, that they would like to maintain a lot of these town center zoning districts because they have a nice amount of nuance to them where you can kind of address some of those design issues. But we're, unfortunately, with the single-family stuff, are kind of limited in what we can require.
So, if I heard you right, Brad.
Yeah.
Then you are making that distinction between the broad-brush land use plan and the actual zoning.
So, yeah, the land use plan will inform the eventual rezonings that happen after the land use plan is adopted, God willing.
A little bit worried that, you know, you've got the best of intentions, and I think the consensus is that there would be a difference between the land use plan for this area and the specific.
Very much potential, yeah, for that.
But how do we capture that?
So, I think the, since these are such a generalized broad-brush categories, and it's important to make sure that they're generalized for the plan purposes, we don't want to get too specific. And we kind of ran into that in two thousand and nine where we, with the activity centers, where we were like, business activities, regional activities, southern activities, and it just kind of got overwhelming. So, I think House Levine has a good strategy here with sort of simplifying those, those uses to more broad-brush designation, use designations. And then when we get into the actual zoning, you know, we'll articulate them more. So, if we feel like the town center is a special area still, and we want to maintain a certain feel that's in certain standards, separate from the rest of town, we're certainly able to do that. Same with the TOD area, same with McCrimmon Extension Area, whatever area that you feel is extra special or requires an extra layer of regulation, we can certainly do that. But I think they're envisioning this, and it's not reflective in the map because we're not at that stage yet in terms of the detail of that area, but they're envisioning that as a kind of a single-family, narrower lot, detached area.
Something like cotton or maybe like savanna or something.
So, yeah, like a savanna, yeah, alley-loaded would be ideal. Again, we can't regulate that anymore, we used to be able to, but now we can't do that. So, yeah, I think in a perfect world, they would like to see more traditional neighborhood design style kind of development back there, similar to what you might see in Kits Creek or something, but more, maybe not quite as dense as that.
In the final document, will they at least put that in print?
I think in the final document, they can articulate it better. They'll make recommendations, we'll review whether or not they make sense. They're still trying to keep it a little bit broad-brushed because that's kind of what the purpose of the land use plan is, they don't want to get too into the weeds. But yeah, I, the town center's a special place, it needs extra attention and nuance in the plan, and I intend to make sure that that's provided.
Thank you. Are there any other areas that we should discuss? What about the areas closer to the airport? I know we had some discussion about.
Sure.
How much of that we should relax since we've been.
So, yeah, House Levine is showing, granted, this is a team effort, but, you know, we're giving them creative license at the first attempt of this map, and they're showing this, so right now, this is pretty dominant lane. And the land use plan, in two thousand and nine land use plan, it's just a big gray void, essentially, and it's basically setting it up for future plans, like, we'll address this with a small area plan. We attempted to do a small area plan in, I think it was twenty twelve, that with the resources we had was fine. It just didn't get, I think the details weren't there, it didn't give enough direction. And so, now you want to tackle it with more visuals, and we use it as one of the subareas, the three subareas that you looked at. So, we wanted to pay closer attention to this. They're envisioning this as a kind of a opportunity for a gateway district. We have a wonderful development, the way Competition Center is about finished. You can kind of see it in this aerial right here. We have this wonderful new four-lane road being built by the town that should be opened up in the next month or so. I'm sure you've driven by it if you've gone down Airport, McCrimmon, or Aviation. And so, they're saying, let's seize this opportunity to do something above and beyond what's being built around there already. You know, and they're posing the question, do you, do you want to see something different? Or do you want a continuation? This is where the subarea discussion that we had, do you want to see a continuation of industrial flex space over and over again in this area, or do you want to see something different? They happen to have the opinion that this could be an opportunity for more compact, walkable, mixed-use type area if the town desires that with a, you know, variety of uses, including multifamily residential. But it can also include hotels, it can also include retail, restaurants, things like that. So, adding amenities to that area. But that is a policy decision that has a lot of implications because, of course, there's the big airport noise overlay that was put in place a while back that would have to be peeled off, or maybe not peeled off, amended, I should say, so.
Comments on that?
I personally like what is being proposed, and I would like to see that rather than take away the airport noise part, I would like to see our building codes be upgraded to account for noise pollution. I mean, our building could need to be upgraded anyways for lots of things. And I would use this as an opportunity to say that we need to bump up our code requirements to include, you know, noise prevention and things of that nature. Because here, we are only talking about airport, but we have not talked about anything around the railway corridor. As you are moving homes closer towards that railway corridor, what about those homes, right? What about the noise coming from the railways? Those, those are also the things that you need to.
It's a good point.
Talk about, like, we approved the townhomes around Church Street that are kind of pushing up into the railway corridor, right?
Yeah.
But we never talked about noise pollution into that.
Yeah, we have a townhome project being, I think, yeah, it's going to, but you can already see the ground being cleared. It's right smack next to the.
Right next to it, too, right? So, all of that, to me, our building codes need to be raised up regardless of what we do with, with the, you know, aircraft noise.
Yeah, I mean, the railroad corridor certainly generates a lot of noise. Someone argued it generates more noise if you live right next to it than the airplanes would. And yeah, and I think House Levine would totally agree with that point that, you know, if you went to this direction of diversifying the uses in that area, that you'd certainly, especially with residential or schools or whatever you decide to, or whatever happens there, that they consider noise attenuation in their building, you know, sealing that off as best they can. And there's, there's tons of ways to do that.
That's when you talk about modifying it rather than just.
Yeah, so we, that's a great point, yeah. So, we, when I corrected myself earlier by amending it, we, I think we'd still like to leave that old contour line, that airport noise overlay contour, we would just modify the uses allowed. And then with the stipulation that they do certain noise attenuation. Yeah, that's their plan at least.
What models are you seeing, like what ideals, based on similar situations where you're close to the airport, you may approve building codes to allow for more, but is there sort of some model, like ideal, that you're looking at a specific other area and saying, hey, this is a great model for what we could do in the future?
It just varies so much from community to community. Like, you got Denver on one end that does, has like a super, super, super wide buffer of restricted land uses. Then you have like Midway in Chicago where the houses, I don't know if you've ever flown Southwest, the houses are right next to the runway, I mean, it's crazy. So, there's standards that the FAA recommends are, that RDU sort of uses to enforce. It's just that sixty-five decibel noise point. That is considered annoying for most people, this is what they, their words. This is what, this is what is considered bothersome for most folks where they start getting complaints and calls, so. And there's actually noise monitors that pick up where the decibels are. So, in nineteen ninety-four, they did an analysis, they ran a noise contour model that showed the sixty-five decibel line all the way crossing fifty-four into, you know, kind of this TOD area that we have. And that's what we created our noise airport overlay on, you know, these nineteen ninety-four contour lines. They've since gone back, I think it was twenty fourteen, twenty fifteen, did another analysis, and they provided a map and said, actually, it looks like the contours, you know, planes have gotten quieter and the routes have been, you know, FAA's sort of rerouted planes into narrower corridors. The lines have been pushed back to I forty, the sixty-five decibel line. I think they, they were like, we're showing you this just to show you, but that doesn't mean we support you rolling back the contours because we still get the bulk of the complaints when people are upset with noise. And we, you know, it's their position, it's. when people are upset with noise and we, you know, it's their position and it's understandable that they want to maintain as much of a buffer around the airport as possible.
Doesn't hurt them any.
Doesn't hurt, yeah, I mean.
So, I mean, yeah, why bother with the facts or science or anything? Just restrict everyone else, you know.
Can I, can I comment?
Yes.
I think from, I, I look at it two different ways, inside noise and outside noise. So from an inside noise, from an engineering standpoint, you have older homes which you have to retrofit, the newer homes you can certainly design around. I was viewing it as the outside noise. So if you're going to be at a hundred decibels, you're not going to be at 65 outside. So let's say a hand tool is 110 decibels. When you're outside, you have to think differently about the use of that building. Is that what you're talking about? Are you really talking about the inside space? Because I was completely considering just the outside space from my car to get into an office building.
Yeah, so that's a great point. They, they just consider it noise and whether or not someone is annoyed by it. They, I think they view as folks are spending most of their time inside, so noise attenuation is helpful, and I think we already do actually have some noise attenuation standards for buildings close to the airport. And we can check on whether those are specifically in the UDO, but outside noise is also a factor. If you have a school and you have a school yard and planes are flying over and they're noisy, that's a distraction. But they, I think they're more focused on the inside noise from what I've, so we've met with them three times now, I think, and that's kind of where the conversation typically goes. But they just say flat 65 decibel, take, you know, whatever you want to read into that, that's.
That's an average, that's an average of the whole day. So if one plane goes over, it's a little louder, well then it's quiet when there's no plane, so that's, that's.
It is an average, yeah.
But that's, that's a good point. So the, the, all these projections, do they take into consideration where the potential high traffic is going to go? So you build, you zone it for now and then 10 years from now, the airport is, you know, double in size and traffic, whatever.
So FAA routes the flights, so they don't really know exactly where they're, they have suspicions of where they go, and I know they want to build a third runway and that could fact, impact that, uh, those, those, those routes. So no, they don't have, so what they do, they just, all they can really do is have these noise monitors which are out there that just on, on a daily average kind of sum up where the noise is coming from, the contours, and you can see that the runways, you know, as you're approaching, it gets noisy, 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 and then it gets to the 65 level and that's when they have an issue. And, but there is, in terms of like the next 10 years, yeah, they don't, I don't think they really have a, a detailed plan of where those flights are going to go.
I was just thinking that even where they're going to go, just number of flights or like market dynamics, I mean, there's direct flights now to, you know, Paris and, and UK that weren't here years ago, right, that are.
They're, they don't have anything real specific, or at least they haven't shown us anything real specific, and I, and I think they, they're careful with what they share with in terms of on, like kind of draft data. And when they release data to the public, they want to make sure it's polished, but, you know, they, they understand that if they have a third runway, you're going to get more direct flights and international flights than you see now, and yeah, that of course will impact noise. They just can't provide a exact, we estimate this number of flights in this time period. At least they haven't shown us that.
But the reality of the fact is anybody who's buying a house in that area, if, if you are in Morrisville, you know that you are going to be impacted with some aircraft noise, right? So it's not to say that, uh, we, customers are not aware of, right? And as long as, as long as the inside noise is, is something that can be managed.
But it's outside noise too, so there are standards that say if you hear at this decibel for a certain amount of time, you risk hearing loss. So when you get to the point that it's the noise of a hand tool, if you're around 100, you start to see that concern when employees are leaving that parking lot going in, so then you have to consider this needs to be an enclosed parking garage with entries attached to it. So that was the only reason I was thinking on those terms. It puts risk to the companies that own that building and to the people coming and going, even though we think as a normal person, that's a two minute walk, somebody who suddenly needs a hearing aid, they now start to tie it to, oh, I was going in and out of this building, so that, I just viewed it a little differently.
I mean, people who have been in perimeter park for, I don't know, 20 years, I mean, I don't think there's been too much problem. I used to work in perimeter park and you could really not even hear the planes inside.
Yeah, I'm from Chicago, so I, I'm sympathizing with the midway. So I just bring a different.
Yeah, we're not talking about houses, I mean, we're talking about residential units, we're not talking about like houses like you would think of a house, we're talking about apartments in building, you know, where you can control on a commercial, you can have, you know, thicker glass or more, you know, insulation on the roof. I mean, we're, we're not really talking about houses here.
Yeah, their, their thought is, at least with, you know, more mid, like multifamily, typically those are for renters, if they don't, if they have a real issue with the noise, they can, it's not a major burden for them to relocate it as opposed to owner occupied units where you invest your life savings in a property, you, you're there and you're like, oh God, you know, there's planes flying at 65 decibels or, I, but I will say that the, the 65 decibel is, they were, they were very clear that that's sort of, where studies have shown that folks start having issues, you know, talking amongst themselves or, and I think 100, like you said, was something they also said where you have hearing problems. We're nowhere near that thankfully, but, and the 65 decibel contour that we saw in the 2014, 2015 map was basically completely out of Morrisville, like straddling I-40. So that's the good news there, so we don't foresee any sort of physical harm on people.
And I think what I hear is people are quite, were quite receptive to the idea that a consultant wants to give more flexibility to that area, so that's the big picture.
We've talked to the property owners, they are generally very, I think, in favor of offering more flexibility in the amount of uses. They, they understand, at least the ones we've talked to, they understand, I mean, there's really only three or four major property owners there. They kind of understand the whole gateway district concept, they, they understand that there's a desire to see something different than what's been built around there.
Do you think that designation in the land use plan is enough to attract people, developers who might want to do that?
So there, so we are, we know anecdotally that there's a tremendous interest from certain developers in that area. Right now it's really restrictive because it's just IM, they can only really do flex space, that's, or, or some, you know, concrete factory or something like that, that's all they're limited to, and, and we know that there's demand to do more. I think we can, I think they understand that we could take it a step further, have some design regu, we, we still have the authority to regulate commercial, so luckily we can orient the buildings in a way that's pedestrian friendly, where the parking is to the back and, and to the side and, you know, buildings are close to the sidewalk and, and we, we have more control over those types of factors than we do with like single family. So we could conceivably make this a cohesive, you know, compact, walkable district. The town just has to have the, you know, like the will to regulate that.
One, one comment I do want to make overall with our plan is, and I don't know whether it becomes in the plan or somewhere else, is how do you preserve some greenery in the town? I, I, you know, I would hate to see Morrisville become another, you know, just homes, homes, homes and with fewer trees, right?
Yeah, so.
How do you do that without using the current way of cleaning up everything and then planting shrubs that die in, in a few years?
Sure, yeah, so loss of green space was certainly an issue that we heard about. In the land use plan, it's going to talk about it more generally. When we get into zoning regulations, then we can dig into the nitty gritty of tree protection standards, impervious surface levels, you know, right now I think most districts are really, you know, max impervious surface of 65% of your lot if you're developing it, and then the rest is preserved for, you know, either some sort of pervious, or usually it's green space or trees or something. From what I understand, we, we do have pretty robust tree preservation standards compared to other communities. I don't want to get into that because.
No.
I'm not an expert in tree preservation, but from what I hear, it's, it's pretty substantial, but we can certainly revisit that when we get to the zoning conversation.
And just, just on that point, I think, I think as a town, we've gotten a lot better at zoning and UDO for new construction. It, it may, it may seem awful because you, you know, reduce all these existing trees to moonscape, but 10 or 20 years after that, the fact that we're demanding a certain number of shade trees per lot, that's beginning to, excuse the pun, it's beginning to blossom. We're beginning to see some really good positive results from, from that, so.
Yeah.
The, the great thing about trees, they do recover, you know, quite anyways.
It, it's just that, that are not, you know, sometimes we take 20 out and we have one, so that.
Yeah, we could take out 20 pine trees and you put in a nice shade tree, pretty good.
I think it's just startling for a lot of people when they drive down, you know, a road and all of a sudden, whoa.
Yeah, well, just like down the road here, but if you look at, if you go on Google Earth and look at maps even 15 years ago, that was almost cleared down to nothing.
Yep.
And then they've just grown, the pine trees have grown up that quickly.
So Brad, do you have a little bit more, do you have enough from us tonight?
I, yeah, this is, yeah, this is great feedback, follow up. You know, I, I think the one issue that we're, it seems like there's a lot of kind of back and forth on just the Holly Creek Road area, you know, I mean, that's, I think we're, I think Houslevine is still waiting for more policy direction on that. There, again, their stance is, you know, there's, there's great points on either side of that debate, you know, they, they think it's a good transition the way it is now, but they understand that the area around it's completely changing and, and it's not unreasonable to assume that area could also kind of blend in with the commercial being developed around it, so. And they also want to stay true to this theme of shifting higher density east of 54, they're apprehensive to add more higher density, potentially higher density districts, even though NAC is a variety, it could be all commercial potentially, but the potential is there.
They started, started out with one sort of viewpoint and they're ignoring what's happening. Like, I just, that's ignoring the reality of the world now, where Wegmans is there, land there is more valuable, it is not, you know, you need to, like you said, embrace the future, don't look back in the past and build the past again.
Well, perhaps, you know, this is what we do in the business domain, right, is we, if consultants and businesses don't agree, we have them put a business case with pros and cons and dollars and cents on each, each, you know, proposals, right? Maybe that's why they can come back and say, if they are hesitant, like option one, here are the pros and cons, here are the, you know, benefits and, you know, let's just say SWOT analysis of, of that area, right? You go, here is for option B, here is the SWOT analysis, and that gives, people takes the emotion out and talks more about facts, and then perhaps we can come to a better conclusion.
Yeah, I mean, I could make it even easier and just ask the board right now, I mean, where, where are we leaning as a group, policy wise, on this Holly Creek Road area? I mean, I think this, it's important to offer some sort of feedback to when council reviews this, that the planning is any more, kind of has a leaning towards one way or the other. I mean, hearing both sides of the argument, I expect if we were to ever rezone this, these folks living here would, would have an opinion about it as well, even though they're carry residents. We still try to consider our, our neighbors and be friendly with them. So it's, you know, yeah. So any, any input.
Which abandoned house were you talking about?
These are all going to be at some point occupied when this bill, uh, former farm is developed into a subdivision. But, um, but yeah, I mean, I, I, you know, plane department is, I think we're right on the, we're right in the middle of the, we, we see, you know, valid points made on both sides, the residents have made some, some great points, so we're open to interpretation and, and kind of a direction on this, and I, I think we'll, at the end of the day, we'll go with what, you know, PCB and council are, are feeling, so.
Well, I, I think you know my perspective, I want to keep that down for a minute, so.
I mean, my perspective is we should, well, I think I've made it pretty clear that it would be better to do that in NAC than where it is now.
I know you'd like to make it a school, but.
Well, I, I would, I think, and it's probably not that the school area, but when you would look at that piece of land and then we look at the other, what I hear is that we're, we're looking at more residential or more even apartment buildings, and I just always want to be mindful of that we have the infrastructure to support the continuous growth within the population. So we step back and we look at the whole map, we're, we're looking at being able to live here, work here, play here, you also have to get educated here, we also have to be able to, to learn here as a way, and, and I think that's got to be in, in some condition. I think the points made, having a holistic, one approach to that plan is a good one, and to do that when, I mean, thoughtful instead of piecemeal, I would, I would agree with that, but don't want to lose the point that we need to provide services across the board.
David's traffic is a pretty big brother, I think he can handle some traffic.
If we own traffic, uh, beyond, beyond that.
So.
Oh, I, I am in agreement, I mean, everything that Tim said, you know, he encapsulated all of my thoughts on, you know, leaning towards maybe business activity center, but we have to get to a point where infrastructure, and by infrastructure, I just don't mean roads. Yes, road is key, but, you know, for, as a community, there is more to infrastructure than just roads. How do you ensure all of those things are planned for overall and, and see how do we get to that point?
Chris?
I'm going to take the easy way out. I have a strong personal opinion, but I would defer to consultants on this because I don't have enough years in Morrisville to evaluate the pros and cons off of what I know right now.
How many years do the consultants have in Morrisville? How many years? Where all the consultants have in Morrisville?
I really, you know, it would really just be my personal opinion and I don't think that's appropriate for something.
That's literally the reason we're here.
It, it really is, but it's, I don't have the information. So this is the first, we're seeing the overlays, which thank you, that's very helpful. Last month, we looked at ink blots. We looked at ink blots and were asked to compare this blue dot and this purple dot and make a decision on it, and then we had Google up here, it was really no value added. So if you're really looking for a decision, then I would look for a cost benefit analysis and be happy to email you one, but we're, we had open discussion, we're having discussion here. I would stick with the plan that's been laid out, I would put housing.
So the MDR.
I would pack a lot of housing into the space, and so I'm looking at it as a very different view, and I, I don't know if that serves everybody in the community, but I live in those types of communities.
Okay. Thank you, Chris.
So I'm.
No, I appreciate your perspective, but it's one of the neat things about having, you know, folks from different areas and different perspectives, that's important. Thank you. Josh?
Oh, I'll defer my comments until I know a little bit more about it, since I'm just seeing this for the first time.
So I think.
It sounds like there is a majority consensus that there should be more NAC, like, of use, so I, I think we can alter the PowerPoint when we present it to council, just to emphasize that there's a general consensus that NAC would probably be the more appropriate use designation for this.
I think for very positive reasons, or, you know, I have tremendous nostalgia about that area, but, you know, I'd rather see it nicely bit by bit, so.
If you're trying to buffer against, I mean, there's nothing saying you couldn't step development down as well, I mean, in the nitty gritty of it, I mean, there's things that you can do to help buffer and still have a cohesive development, you know, that's, everybody talks about, let's get the infrastructure, one of the good ways that you can get infrastructure is to have cohesive developments and not have piecemeal. You know, what we've had is piecemeal all this time, and that's how we're constantly behind the eight ball. You know, one way to be able to put those things in there is to have a more cohesive plan, so I do think that having something that's more similar would be better.
Yep.
Because you can kind of put a little stuff in here and there for that or whatever.
All right. Well, that was the really only area where there was some, some debate, so I think we got what we needed, I think this is a great follow up. I'm glad you all were able to kind of digest this map further and think it through. One thing I quickly just want to point out, I don't know if Michelle has told you about this new map that we have, I only uploaded this like right before Christmas, but, um, this will kind of aid you in future land use planning exercises. Oops. We have a transportation infrastructure map that kind of gives you, if I can let it load, a very detailed look of where road winding projects are going. These are all funded, by the way. So you have like the Causeway here, we got the, this is actually ongoing right now, we have, you know, the flyover from McCrimmon that we've talked about before, kind of showing you where that's expected to go.
Is there a timeline to find somewhere that we can.
So if you click on one of these projects, it gives you all that information, yeah?
Okay.
Nice. Yeah, and so, and it gets real, and these are straight from the DOT's CAD files, so I just traced them over, and these aerials are updated every six months, so you're getting more detailed aerials than Google Maps will provide you, and this is all public, so. Yeah, just thought that would be useful for you all to see, and that's right on our homepage, just click on maps and it takes you to here.
Thank you, Brad.
Yep.
Thank you for agreeing to put this on the agenda, I think it was very worthwhile.
Happy to do it.
So we're at 20 to 8, we sometimes take a break at 8. So we're at 20 to 8. We sometimes take a break at 8:00. Maybe now's the time for a brief break. The remaining item on the agenda is, I think, almost like a training exercise for us. It's always good to, to learn and relearn about the UDO. So Michelle has kindly put that together. So I'm going to suggest we take a five to 10-minute break and then start with item 11, which is talking about the UDO.
You're, to, to manage like other people.
A thousand years.
But I'm saying more just the way my mind works, so that I can...
Look, my, you and Peter are in that kind of... Business is to, to see that, right? Our minds are more, you know, dollars and cents, you know?
And that's what I used to do all the time, like when we would do like plans for somebody's office or whatever, like, you know, they would like be struggling to read. I'm like, I'm just trying to have free to read it. And then, you know, and then like, because it didn't make a difference to me, but that made all the difference to them.
I, I have, um, I'm just first, I know the sections, I don't, I don't touch it.
Doors.
Well, we never talked about, you know, take 40, first, you know? Yeah, it's a number of people.
Well, it's easy, yeah, but you should, it's easy either way, yeah, because I mean, that, that does help, but. One thing, an airport used to be, they used to only have one, it was aviation, it was called Airport Road.
Yeah.
And then they split it to Aviation Parkway and Airport Boulevard, like, I don't know, 30 years ago.
It's so confusing. We didn't have, we didn't have, I don't know, addresses, that's not consistent. It's like greenhouse next to the shop on this road. That's how our addresses used to be. And so whenever you, you reach into someone, you know, so, you know, when you see this shop, you know, want to take a left in a post, first lane.
That's how they deliver mail.
Right, they deliver mail. Bill, the, the mail guy knew exactly, so he would come and service that area. Each and every person living in there.
So he knows where, why. Yeah.
They are the largest postal network in the world. Of course, we have got a, they're close to five billion, I think, one million people.
Well, that was important, yeah.
Tell me she did the minutes to her leaving last one. Instead of ours are never, yeah. I was like, ours are never. It was a deal with the sandals.
Oh, I came from work, I, I came from work, took my stuff home, I was setting up a team. And then the phone buzzed and said, oh, there is, the town hall, town meeting is there. I said, okay, no, I'm good.
She didn't come in her PJs, I mean, that would be...
I, I was like, if I sit down there to wear my shoes, I'll be late, so.
That's great. So I think we're officially back in session.
Okay.
For a relatively informal part. Michelle has volunteered to give us a little bit of training and retraining on the UDO. So over to you, Michelle.
So thank you, Chairman Pritchard. I'm going to try and keep this kind of informal, so feel free, interrupt, ask questions. It's fine if it's a little bit more interactive, but just kind of want to give you a broad overview of the UDO, how to find information in it, and some of the more significant regulations. I'm not going to touch on all of the articles that you see here, just the ones that we get into more when we're dealing with development projects. Article one, not going to open up anything in there, but that is the article where you are going to find information about the purpose of the code. So it's not a section of the code that we are in very often. It comes into play more when we're making interpretations or if a decision is challenged. That article then becomes very important from a, from a legal perspective. But otherwise, day-to-day development review, you're not in there all too much. Article two, which is the administration section, that's where you're going to find information about various applications, the kind of broad overview of the review processes that each application goes through. The duties and responsibilities of the Planning and Zoning Board are located in there. So a lot of what you have in your handbook in terms of your responsibilities, your meeting procedures, votes on different items are taken directly out of that article. As we get into the zoning regulations, that's where you start to get into some of the more significant development review regulations. So each zoning district, just going to open up one of them here, is going to have a table that looks something like this. You have a little bit of narrative at the top that talks about what the purpose of the district is. Once again, always important for context or interpretation. And then this principal intensity and dimensional standards table. You may hear developers and others refer to those as bulk zoning standards. That's where you get into, and will find information about the maximum lot coverage that's allowed, building setbacks, building height, if you're dealing with subdivisions. There's usually a minimum lot area, a minimum lot width. All those, what I would call bulk standards are located in the tables for each of the zoning districts. And you'll see that sometimes they're broken off, are broken out by use. Kind of broad category uses, but single family typically has its own standards. Multi-family has its own standards, and then other uses fall into a separate category. We do have a couple planned development districts. So you'll see that they have a similar table in them, but when you get into some of the standards, it says, you know, in accordance with the PED planner agreement. So when you're dealing with the planned development, there are going to be some set standards, usually parking stormwater. There are certain regulations that absolutely have to be met. But the idea with the planned development is that by providing more flexibility, kind of not necessarily going by the strict standards of the code, that there could be a win-win for everyone, and you could do something a little bit more creative and unique. So the PZB reviewed a planned development probably about a year ago. It was the aviation landing development. You might recall that there was a very thick document that went with that. So that document sets forth the rules and regulations for that development in terms of their setbacks, their buffers, their building heights. That, that is done by agreement in those districts. And then Chairman Pritchard asked that we did review the principal use table and, and principal use regulations with you in a, in a little detail and just kind of refresher on some of that. So I'm going to zoom in a little bit. So this is table 4.2.4. You'll see each district is listed across the top here. And then uses are along the left-hand side and different designations in the table indicating if those uses are permitted in those zoning districts or not. So you'll see a couple uses doesn't, or two different kinds of Ps in the table. There's a regular P and then there's the P with the asterisk by it. Those are the uses that are permitted by right. So an applicant has a legal right to develop that use in that district if they're complying with the standards of the code. Everything with just the plain P, those are the projects that are going through the staff review process and then straight to building permit. So those are the projects that we're working on day-to-day back in the office that you do not see. They're not going through the Planning and Zoning Board or Town Council Review Process. If you're ever interested in knowing, you know, what those, some of those projects are, you could always look on our interactive development map where we have information about all applications that have been received, at least applications for new development. We don't include on there modifications to approve plans. We can approve a lot of those at the staff level as well and actually do spend a fair amount of time on those types of applications. But all new development is on that intera, interactive development map. The ones here with the P and the asterisk, those again are your administrative permitted by right applications. But those are the ones that do still go through review, review process with Planning and Zoning Board and Town Council. So once again, if the standards of the code are met, there is a legal obligation to approve them. I think there have been instances, however, when applicants have gone through that process, requests have been made for changes. We've asked for some small pocket parks to be added and other things from time to time. And the applicant has voluntarily agreed to make those changes. And the key is that they have voluntarily agreed. You cannot condition or require it, but we have had some success there.
So what's the difference between place of worship community and place of worship neighborhood?
It's based on the size of the development. I believe it's an 8,000 square foot threshold. So there are some places of worship, you know, smaller places of worship that don't have as significant of an impact on traffic. We know that we have some larger places of worship where that impact is much greater. So if you look at this column on the right-hand side, tied to some of these things are specific use regulations. And I believe with the place of worship, when you get to the neighborhood one, there are additional standards that are applicable because they're larger facilities. There's more activity, there's more traffic. Where you see a C in the... Um, where you see a C in the chart, and you guys have not seen many of these applications, we don't have it come in, come in very often, but that is indicating that that use may be appropriate with a conditional rezoning. So we're already kind of putting it out there to the development community that this is somewhat acceptable, but you need to come in with a conditional rezoning application. And once again, those are legislative decisions, so that's where you have discretion, um, and can, um, impose condition. They need to be voluntary conditions again, but there's typically negotiation and back-and-forth because it's not guaranteed that that's gonna be approved, and developers trying to make a strong case to you, um, and so that you do see more back-and-forth on those. Um, and they are discretionary. You do not need to, um, approve those if you don't believe it's in the best interest of the community. Um, I don't know if there are any on this page. I'll go to the next page. Um, you also have, um, some Ss in the chart, so those are the special use permits. Um, you reviewed a special use permit at your last meeting. It was the L and L concrete application. So that's when we're getting into the quasi judicial reviews. Um, it's very much like a court proceeding. Witnesses are testifying, being sworn in under oath. There's no communication about those applications outside of the meeting. Um, very strict procedures. Um, you're acting more like a jury. Um, and, um, there are findings that the case is weighed against. Um, so you're familiar with it, you just, you just saw one last month.
So, w- one thing I did find interesting about that one was the, the, the judges, or rather the, you know, um, lawyers, were party, that were representing the same party.
Mm-hmm.
Right? So I would have thought that there is a, you know, if, if it is really a judicial kind of activity, you would have somebody counter-questioning their, you know, things that they do, right? Is that really, yes, some of it seemed quite rehearsed between the two lawyers and their, i- in their representatives, right? So if it is, who represents the town to perhaps question some of those things? We did during that timeframe, but if we are jurors, I don't know whether we get to do that really in, in a proper way.
Yeah. Um, and I think with that case, I mean, staff was supportive of that application. We are supportive of that application. It's on its way, um, to town council. Um, but, you know, if you ever want, we can have our stormwater staff, our engineering staff, um, more of our transportation staff, um, here to answer questions, um, to bounce off of as well. Um, you know, asking, do you concur, you know, um, with the suggested findings that are being made by these consultants? Um, I have also worked in communities where if there is a controversial application, the neighbors will hire consultants, um, and present an opposing view. Um, you received an application, um, I think there was an appraiser, um, some of the people that worked for the company, civil engineers and, and others testifying. But, um, you could always, um, request additional staff to, to be at those meetings. Um, we did have our transportation staff, um, there last time in the event that you had questions for them in terms of some of the information being presented by the petitioner.
But given that all those presentations happened during that time...
Mm-hmm.
To request one, is that mean that we would postpone any discussion or arriving at a decision on that for that particular case until the next time? Or do we have to decide on that particular case that day?
If you ever feel that after the petitioner has presented, you don't have all the information you need to make a determination as to whether you think a particular finding has ma- been met or not, you can request that, you know, that that public hearing be continued and that additional information provided at the next meeting. You have the ability to do that.
You just have to make a motion and we vote on it. Okay. I think I'd also point out that I think our job is to question those voices, so we're not just a passive jury sitting back.
Yeah.
It's kinda nice you actually ask questions. And those of us, I'm thinking of myself in particular, if we ask dumb questions, which I seem to be able to do, sometimes that brings out some very interesting discussions.
Mm-hmm.
And so well was one of those, so.
One other thing to note about the use chart, um, is that if a use is not listed, um, and a developer comes in proposing something, it doesn't neatly fit into one of these use categories, we are required at the staff level to make an interpretation as to what use it is most similar to. Um, in the past, if a use was not shown, um, it was considered to be prohibited, but there is now some case law, um, and that occurred a few years ago, where we need to make an interpretation as to what that use is most similar to. And most similar to in terms of the impacts. So, um, it's the type of use, it's, you know, that has classes day in and day out, you know, classes at set times, what other uses, um, have that kind of same operation with traffic coming and going at set times, or it could be noise or, or other things, that it's really that the activities associated with the use. Um, I'm not gonna go into them, but we do also, um, have standards for your accessory uses, um, so your gazebos, your sheds, um, other things, um, and temporary uses, your, your special events, um, fall into that category.
Before we move off the principal use table, I guess, th- the key here is that if we are looking at a rezoning case, we have to be very careful to look at all the possibilities that that new zoning might entail. And we can't just fall for the developer saying, well, we're gonna build this wonderful structure, here's the plan, you know, here's the elevation.
Mm-hmm.
Next week, they sell it to somebody else and it's a totally different project. So we always have to think about the worst case on that use table.
That's a very good point. And always take the long, long view, you know, particularly if you're looking at a non-residential development. Someone may present a use to you, that use may very well be what goes in that building, but ten, fifteen, twenty years later, that building's being reused, and there's a different business, a different tenant going in.
So the, in the accessory uses and structures, is that where the underground cabling thing came in, or was that totally something different?
Um, that was, um, in a different section.
Okay.
Yeah, down there a little bit further. Um, so Article Five, um, is where a lot of our development, uh, regulations are located. So this becomes a, a pretty important chapter. Um, you'll see our tree protection, um, standards, um, are in that section, Section five point four. Um, just a touch on that, um, very briefly here. So, um, for tree protection, um, you may or may not be aware that we really regulate, um, based on canopy coverage. So you look at the existing canopy coverage on a site, and then there's a sliding scale, it's based on the type of development again, but say the property is ninety-two to one-hundred percent wooded, we're looking at some sort of town home or multifamily development, they would need to save nineteen percent of that. Um, it doesn't matter, um, you know, size, we don't get into necessarily the size of those trees, um, and a lot of that, um, as you're going through your processes, based off of aerials, and then some work done by a landscape architect or arborist, arborist as well on top of that. Um, buffer requirements, and I am jumping a little here, so if you have questions about something, I'm kinda passing over, um, just let me know. Um, but with each development, um, we do require, um, different buffers. So you look at the use that's proposed, and then you look at what's on the adjacent property, and it will tell you what type of buffer you need to provide. Um, each buffer has, uh, two options. So there's always an option with landscaping only, and then a narrower option if you incorporate a fence or a wall. Um, so an applicant can choose, um, between either option. Um, Section five point eight is access and circulation, so that is where you are going to find our regulations related to cross-access, um, public street connectivity, um, whether or not a development is required to have one or two points of access, um, all of that information is in that section of the code. Um, and then we have our design guidelines in Section five point nine. Um, so in this chapter, you're gonna get into, um, material requirements. Um, we have different requirements based on whether you're a multifamily, um, development or a non-residential development. Um, I am going to just real quickly flip to, um, the non-residential table. So we have lots of materials listed, and then it tells you what's, um, permitted, um, on the building. For the most part, if you're dealing with non-residential, it's a seventy-five percent masonry requirement.
Can I ask a question real quick about the emergency vehicles on one of the meetings that we had? The reason I was asking questions is the emergency response, are they evaluating it as empty? And the reason I ask is around all of these Amazon deliveries. So I live in an area, we looked at a property that had a loop, where a fire truck could come in and make a loop, but what you actually see in a four-up building is people don't wanna carry groceries, dog food, nothing. Virtually everything comes from Amazon. So the entire area is double, triple blocked with these vehicles making deliveries, where they're running up and down four flights of stairs. So my concern was around, is that all, how does that get captured? That those are questions around things that have changed in the e-commerce world in the last five years, and it might not be as apparent in a residential area, but in a four-story building, and there are just a circle to go in and out, it could be a problem at some point. So that, that's why that was running through my head, because you get stuck even in your car and in a parking place, and you have all of these trucks and a moving van. I've been stuck for almost twenty minutes just trying to be unblocked. So I don't know if that needs to be addressed at some point when you only have a loop for a fire truck to come in, but it's, it should be a concern at some point.
Um, and to some extent, that is an issue for the management company. Um, the fire department is involved, kind of across the board, almost every department's involved in, in the review of, of the development application. Um, fire department has something called aerial access requirements. Um, so they need a twenty-six foot wide fire lane within thirty feet of the building, and they need to be able to park a vehicle there. And the aerial access in that distance allows them to lay a ladder at, at the top of the building and, and get up there and get that aerial access if they need it. So with every development plan that comes through, they do receive a turning radius plan, um, and they look at those aerial access requirements and make sure that fire lanes are provided in the correct location. I think it was a couple of years ago, um, there was a, a change to the code where those fire lanes are now marked in red instead of yellow, so they are really popping out at you more. Um, you are not supposed to be parking in those areas. Um, so if there is parking occurring in those areas, or occurring regularly, regularly in those areas, let us know. Um, but the fire department is, um, involved in those reviews, um, to make sure, you know, in the unfortunate event, that there is an incident, that they can get access.
I think the idea is that the fire trucks come, in theory, hopefully these people will move out of the way. I mean, I know, in the neighborhood I used to live in, they act, the fire department would come through over in Breckenridge, it was kind of a townhome type, and they actually told the management company, you have to get these people from parking on the street 'cause they couldn't drive the trucks. And if it's an ongoing problem, you probably could also call the fire department, and they could swing a truck through there. They actually will do something and make, make them do it.
But I had no doubt that they looked at it from a management standpoint, but just the increase of these delivery trucks, the food trucks, it's, it's constant now in the town homes and those types of communities, so it, it might be something in the future because just telling the management company to go out there and scream, move your Amazon truck, the guys up four flights of stairs with a sofa down a hallway with no visibility to the street, and those are the people you're waiting for to come out and move their vehicles.
Yeah, the fire department will find them.
But our streets are, you know, even in residential properties, I see that because the parking lots are so small, and people now have two, three cars, they park on the streets and then on both sides, even though we, we now have to park in the direction that you, or the traffic is supposed to move, the gap between two cars or the one, the free space is not large enough to get a minivan through, uh, without, you know, being careful to not touch the two cars. You know, you have to question what happens when a fire truck has to go through there, right? So we really need to think about those, at least the major roads, even in these subdivisions.
And those types of standards, um, so you know, are in, we call it the EDCM, it's the Engineering Design and Construction Manual. Um, if you do ever have suggestions, you know, about those things, you could let us know. Different street types have different required street li- street widths. Um, so most of your neighborhood streets are twenty-seven feet back of curb to back of curb. So yes, if you have cars parked directly across from each other on both sides, it can be tight, um, but it is wide enough for an emergency vehicle to, to still make it through.
Thank you, sorry.
Um, so in terms of, um, some of our design guidelines, um, I did want to, um, point out, um, just a couple more things. I think one, um, Planner West was up there here earlier, he made a couple of references to, um, state statute and some limitations that we have on design review. So, um, single-family detached and our single-family attached, our town home developments. The state took away our authority a few years ago to impose design regulations on those types of developments. Um, when that occurred, um, I think we got a little creative with the UDO and tried to create an incentive for developers to voluntarily comply with some design guidelines. So if you do go through, um, this section of the code, you will see some design guidelines for those single-family homes and those town home developments. Um, it is prefaced that it is voluntary, um, but the incentive there is if you voluntarily agree to abide by those design guidelines, you go through a staff review process. If you do not wanna abide by those guidelines, it is considered a major site plan, and it goes through the planning and zoning board and town council review process, which adds time, time is money, um, to developers. So, um, we have had, um, some success with that in terms of getting people to voluntarily agree, um, to those guidelines. Um, the town home standards are a little bit harder to meet, so that's one section of the code, um, that we, you know, wanna go back and look at more of the single-family. Um, have chosen that process, but town home standards, I think we've had one developer who has been able to actually meet the voluntary design guidelines. So when you reviewed, um, the text amendments last month, you'll see that there was a minor change there in terms of how many guidelines they needed to meet, 'cause they do have a laundry list, just to start chipping away, um, at that until we could give it a, a little bit more thought. Um, but it doesn't matter if it's a two-hundred lot subdivision or a five-lot subdivision. Um, the difference in regards to whether or not, um, that application comes before you and the town council, um, is really just design guideline related. Um, Section five point ten, um, those are where you find your parking and loading Section 5.10, those are where you find your parking and loading requirements, how many spaces are proposed in each district. There are also some parking orientation standards. So in some districts, we're looking for the parking to be located behind or to the side of the building, minimize the sea of parking in front of the building. So there are some regulations in here as well as to where parking can be located depending on the zoning district that you are in. Then we have, I'm going to go through these quickly, utilities and services, that's where the undergrounding that you were asking about is located, variety of landscape requirements, screening in terms of dumpsters, mechanical equipment, other things, fences, lighting, and signage. So a lot located in that Article 5. It's pretty much all the stuff outside of those ball curculation is in that article. And then I'm just going to jump down to Article 11. That becomes an important article for us, your definitions whenever you're making interpretations. Staff at least is actually in that article quite often.
One quick question on the utilities. Does that also now include trying to encourage builders to have, you know, electrical chargers, solar panels, try to be more energy efficient developments? Are those kinds of things now mentioned in there, or are those things still, you know, up for discussion?
Yeah, we have some of those regulations in the UDO. Could there be more? Probably. Electrical vehicle charger stations, they are not required, but if you do provide them, we do have kind of some standards associated with them, how they're signed, location, those sorts of things. So yes, that in particular is in that section, or that's in the parking section.
Okay. But in general, we, we can do a bit more on the, you know, trying to be more efficient in terms of consumption of energy and disposal of our garbage and whatnot, right?
When you get into your environmental regulations, I mean, trees always pop out as an area. Our tree regulations are actually fairly strict. If you, we have development holds that get placed on properties if trees are removed. But you could, building codes, just policies in terms of town facilities, there are a lot of other ways to get at some of those environmental things. A lot of them, when you're looking at the building code, we don't manage utilities, but water usage is a big thing. So yeah, some of that can be done through the UDO. Some of it is frequently done through other avenues as well.
Okay.
Okay. So that's an overview.
Thank you very much. I had a dumb question. When I used to have a paper version of the UDO, I could fold over one corner or stick a sticky on one page. I do that electronically so that I can instantly go to the principal use table, sort of electronic bookmark, or do I have to have my own version to do that?
You're asking for an electronic bookmark to that section?
Yeah.
We could send you a link, and then you could click on the link, and it would bring you directly to that section every time, or we could give you a hard copy if you would prefer.
Okay, just, just a thought. Just an old guy harking back to the pencil and paper days, that's all.
Might get him a paper version.
Yeah. Well, he's got to study it tonight, and we're going to quiz him next.
Paper version.
Just memorize it.
Michelle, I did have one more question for you. Last time when we were reviewing some plan, there was discussion around the topics, the staff reviews, you know, the, before it comes to us, you know, there is a checklist of items that you review and you go through and you do that, right? And I believe Courtney was to share what those, those things are with us so that, you know, when we, before it comes to us, you know, we know that here are the 20 things that you have looked at, and therefore we could kind of maybe move things along. Or this was in the context of when Tim provided the guidelines that we wanted to think about. We talked a whole lot and said, perhaps we need to get a bit more understanding of the staff review process of what you look at and what are your, you know, creamy, I mean, basically red or stop or green, right? So that we get an understanding of what the staff does before it comes to us. Maybe that may be something, perhaps maybe in the next time, we can talk about.
Sure. And I could just talk about it briefly. There is a companion document to the UDO. It's called the Administrative Manual. So when you're talking about review procedures in the UDO, that's high level, what types of applications go to what board and what the standards for approval are. The, I guess, the finer details that go along with that in terms of review schedules and what someone needs to submit with an application are in that companion document. They're in the Administrative Manual. And you will see some references to the Administrative Manual in the UDO. It is a separate document because that allows us to tweak, change processes without having to go through a text amendment process. So if we want to update something on a checklist, we can do that. Happy to provide all of you a link to the Administrative Manual if you want to take a look at that. It will tell you when applications come in. Typically, you'll probably see four staff reviews. It depends on the quality of the application that comes in, how responsive applicants are to comments. But four is probably a good average. First review's 30-day, subsequent reviews are two weeks. So those applications are going through, you know, somewhat of a process before they get to you, and some time and effort has gone into that. With the administrative reviews, we're working to get to the point where it's met code before it gets to you. With the rezonings, probably not quite so many reviews, but, you know, just having worked with you, having worked with town council, we do try to advise applicants of those things that we know are, through past discussions, are important, and, you know, make some suggestions in terms of maybe potential conditions they might want to offer up. So some of those discussions do happen before those get to you as well.
I think the link to the document will help us get a better idea of what the things are.
And just a little bit of aside, we're really excited because the last month or so, we have been working on rolling out our new Intergroup software system. So for the first time, people are able to apply and submit their applications online, download documents, finally getting away from paper.
Any other UDA-related comments? So Michelle, staff comments. The December planning newsletter was quite slim, I think.
It was. It was definitely a slower month. Could you bring up the newsletter, Marty?
You have to.
Oh, sorry. Oh, it is not connecting there. It was a little bit of a slower month, I think, with the holidays there. Activity just slowed down. We did, surprisingly, there were a lot of minor modifications. I was talking about the small changes to previously approved plans that happened, where new tenants move in, you know, they're making changes to building facade, maybe adding a loading space somewhere. There were a large number of those, but we try and capture just the larger projects here. It is, it is starting to pick up again now that the holidays are over and we're into, into the new year. So there will be a little bit more on here next month. One thing I do want to point out that we are excited about is we did hire a new Planner 1. So her name is Emily Langston. She's a graduate of UNC Chapel Hill, originally comes from the Portland, Oregon area. So you may recall Elliot Ward was promoted to Planner 2 position not long ago, leaving that position vacant. So we're definitely excited to have her.
Board comments. Chris?
No comments.
Board comments?
No comments.
Serge?
I'd say with, since we are starting 2020 now with a re, you know, a couple of new members, maybe three new members on the town council, maybe it might be helpful to have a informal, if you will, discussion with the town council to know, you know, what are they looking, what are their visions for 2020? If they have had a chance to talk among each other first, right, as and when it is appropriate, right? This way, we, we can be, if not on the same page, but at least know and get to know each other, if you will. I thought it helped the last time we met the town council. So maybe it is a, it might be a good idea to do that sometime in first half.
And that's something I could raise with manager page. You do also have the strategic plan that the town council approved still not that long ago. So that really outlines major priorities and initiatives as the council sees them. And I'm happy to provide you that document.
Yep, that's it.
Great, thank you. Thank you. Lee?
No comments.
Ken?
No comments.
No comments.
Well, again, reiteration, congratulations, Michelle.
Thank you.
You may have second thoughts very soon, but I'm so pleased that, that you're taking the job. That's great.
Appreciate that.
Item 16. Chris, you are now a voting member, so you can actually propose a motion. Item 16.
I've proposed the motion to end the meeting.
I'll second.
I'll second.
All in there, say aye.
Aye.
We're adjourned, thank you very much.
Thank you.